Thank you very much. First item of business, under announcements and presentations, I do need to announce that the board held executive sessions on March 12th and March 26th. That was to discuss personnel, real estate acquisition and matters involving attorney-client privilege. Next, under announcements and presentations, we are delighted to have our insurance team with us this evening for a rebate presentation. Mr. Schnell.
We're excited to share that EMC Insurance Company has declared a dividend for the Pennsylvania Municipal Safety Group Insurance Program for the ninth consecutive year. This highlights a profitable 2024 made possible by the dedication of the township, its management and supervisors. This year, the dividend payments total an impressive nearly $1.3 million across the whole program, equating to about 12.6% of earned premium dollars from more than 300 townships and municipalities that are participating in the program. Silver Spring Township is one of those. Since the program's inception 20 years ago, over 14 million in payments have been made to those that are involved in the program. So tonight, we at Cumberland Valley Insurance are honored and privileged to present the township with its check for a total of $38,937.06.
Thank you very much. This one looks real. You usually give me a fake one.
That is, yes, I believe Cheryl has the real.
Oh, there.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your continued trust in us to serve as your representative.
You've done a good job.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming in. All right, I'd like to invite Ray up, our township manager. He has a few updates and some projects to share. Ray?
Yeah, thank you. We'll jump onto the first page. Thanks. So here's where we are, two months into the year, although three, we do our recording here. We're one month behind. Right now, we're 18% ahead on the revenue and 11% on the expenses. Right now, we're at a very, very good place after two months of the year. We've had some significant permits and we've also had some significant real estate transfers. So we anticipate this to be probably one of our bigger years in terms of transfer and permit activity. EIT continues to be very strong. Anybody know here that Gannett Fleming is going to be moving over to the Deloitte Building? There's some say as many as 200 to 300 employees are going to be coming over to the Deloitte Building. So again, another, another group of people working in the township. So we jump onto the next one. You've seen all these. The big announcement here is that we've started our new Kingstown project. For anybody here, it's in, there may be some online, so that project is started, so that's exciting. Again, we've also started to do a number of the projects on the Carlisle Pike and also the 114 that we've received grants for. So those are going to be big initiatives for us as we go forward. The staff is also reviewing the ordinances and we anticipate, or our hope is, at least to get some drafty in April, but we're still working through a couple of things during the, in the ordinance. Jump onto the next one. These are the four big grants, one we know we didn't get, which was announced. We've, we've been in touch with obviously Representative Cuts. Cuts Town, excuse me, Cuts, Cuts, sorry. I have Nancy reminding me how it's pronounced. I'm so sorry. Thomas has been an amazing person. We actually talked about the LS8 grant the other day and the PennDOT Multimodal Grant, which is State and Texaco. We've asked the state to help us with the, to reshape State and Texaco and we're hoping that we'll get some money to do both of those major projects. We anticipate Woods Drive to be a major cut through or a major roadway, especially with Costco coming. We did meet with Costco this week. As you all know, they have moved the date from the summer to the fall of this year. They're pretty determined that that fall date is gonna happen. They're very determined. And they said if they have to work seven days, they're gonna make it happen. So it's, looks like the fall of '25. We'll jump into the next one. You've seen, everybody's seen the Costco property. I mean, you can see they've hit what you already know they've hit, which is Rock. We'll go into the next one. They're just continuing to work all day to get the site work prepped and ready to go. We've met with their team. They're very determined. They've been very good in their communication with the project, both the site work group and the CM, Novak, and the people from Costco. So everything continues to move forward at a very aggressive pace. Jump through. Anybody see the new Seven Brew? They were doing, they did a soft opening where they gave some free drinks away. We were out there on the 25th of this week and they had a big grand opening in which staff and some of our supervisors were present. They have said in their first couple of weeks, this, their expectations has far exceeded anything they could have ever imagined. They have been quite busy, if you've seen or driven by. They're also planning to have a big push on Saturday of this week. So if you like coffee, you like organic drinks, there's like 250 different types of ways to make it. They've been very successful in what they do and we're really fortunate to have them in the township. So we're excited that they've, they've come on board. We talk about the programs. We had our jig jog down at Stony Ridge and then our big one here, we've got the Shredded Event. Anybody who has papers or anything you want to do, Saturday on the 5th at Cole's Parking Lot, 9:00 to 12:00 is the Shredded Event. We do it with Hampton Township, so it's a collaborative effort between both Silver Spring and Hampton. So, and then there's a number of events. May 7th, we'd ask everybody here and everybody online, please come join us on May 7th. We have an open house here. This will be our fourth year that we do an open house where people can come in and meet the staff and talk about or ask any questions with staff. We have it open. We have snacks, treats. Anybody that is available, please come join us. We'll see some equipment here, but we want to have an opportunity for everybody in the community to come see the open house. And then there's a number of events coming up beyond that. And then it's all laid out and it's all on the website. One of the biggest things that's happened two weeks ago, I want to give a shout out to Cheryl and all the staff. We have taken our system, which was an on-premise platform system and moved it to the cloud. So we're going through a migration. We're in week two of the migration. Overall, it has actually done quite well. There's always going to be snafus and lots of questions. But as you know, and we've shared with the board, the migration or the cloud premise, the cloud product is gonna allow our staff to be more flexible and have the ability to do more things in the field. It's like inspections on site, to be able to do them right there with a tablet, hit the approval and email it immediately right from the site. That's one of the biggest things we've been doing for a long time. But we had to go through the server, server wouldn't connect and all the things that you face in this whole connectivity world. And now we're having the ability to do all of it without any of those interruptions. So the staff is excited about lots of extra things that we're, we're able to do now with this new, this new cloud. So again, I want to say to the board, thank you for approving this. I want to say thank you to Cheryl and the staff. It has been a lot of work. And I just want to say, on behalf of the township, we have a lot of exciting things to come in '25. So thank you.
Thanks, Ray. All right, let us move on to public comment. If there is any comment, please come up, state your name and address. Mr. Duncan, looks like you're volunteering to go first.
I am, thank you. Randy Duncan, 51 Green Ridge Road. I have some information here, quote attributed to Thomas Jefferson. "In a democracy, knowledge is truly power. Transparency of process in government keeps citizens abreast of what government is doing in real time. Transparent processes in government assure that the acts of elected officials reflect the will of the citizenry. For it is the elected officials and citizens work together toward, toward the same purposes that government truly works with the most efficiency and least friction. A government that affords sufficient time to reflect upon and to understand its proposed actions shows respect for and confidence in its citizens. Transparent governmental processes make the citizenry partners in knowledge with the government. Such shared knowledge not only assures citizens that their government has nothing to hide, but also evidences a healthy willingness by the government to have citizen input from the inception of its proposed actions. Such a government reflects Alexander Hamilton's assertion that the confidence of the people is easily gained by good administration." Last month, it was quoted that there was a number that was attributed to right-to-know requests. It followed a citizen who had commentary about, and who is a regular filer of right-to-know requests. There are 30 items required to be restricted by right-to-know. Only 30. Of those 30, even with the permission of those involved, some of those could be disclosed. So all, the right-to-know requests beyond those 30, or at your discretion, are representative government who have decided to restrict these items instead of open sourcing these items. And so that cost, although maybe reflected by the efforts of the citizens to hold the government accountable, we have five minutes to ask our questions and hold the government to account by the restriction of this clock. Some are held to account within that timeframe. Others are allowed to go beyond that. So when we are asking for right-to-know requests, we are trying to understand your actions inactions and results of those and proposed actions that we have not, not yet been a party to. We are intended to be included in these decisions in this representative government. And so I implore to you that this is an unnecessary cost if it was dealt with upfront. We have this new website that's coming up. The old website was an unsearchable one. If I put in ball, I would get 1,000. If I put red ball, I'd get 10,000 hits. If I put big red ball, I'd get 100,000. And in no particular order, no searchable format, no reasonable way to sit there and sort that information out. So it's not only the information that's provided on the, on the website. It has to be in a usable format that the, that the citizenry can understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Ray, we don't, we, we allow, if there's an RTK, we give them the information, right? If it's permissible by law, right? We're not holding back.
No, everything is, everything is released. Obviously, if there's anything that seems unusual, we always utilize the solicitor just to guide us in the process.
If I could jump in, I don't think that's what Mr. Duncan was saying exactly. I think what he was saying is there are exemptions from the right-to-know, so and he was just here for, for training last, last week on, on this. Right-to-know now, since the amendments back in 2008, create a presumption that all records held by the township are public records. And then the township has to show that an exception would, would apply if it's going to not disclose that, that item. So there are those 30 exceptions. I think what Mr. Duncan is saying, many of them, and we had this discussion last week, many of them, despite the exception, a municipality can choose to still release that, that item. We had a very brief discussion on, you know, obviously there are some personnel, personal privacy rights that, that we'd want to protect. But there are, there are some items that, that could be disclosed despite the exceptions. I think that's where he was, he was going with that.
Any other public comment? Anything online, Scott? Ricky?
Hi, can you all hear me?
We can.
Hi, Ricky McLaren, 111 Stephen Drive. Before I make my comment, can I just get a quick confirmation that the E-code that's available online is not up to date? Can someone confirm that for me?
Yeah, when, Scott, when was it last updated?
Can you hear me, Ricky?
Yep.
So the E-code, if you're using the numbers that say 415 for zoning or 360 for saldo, those numbers are not the correct adopted ones. However, if you go under new laws on the tab there, then those are the ones that are in place currently. So they're on E-code, they're just not codified yet.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I think that my comment's probably still relevant. So I'll, I'll just go ahead with it. Thanks for that clarification, Scott. So just, you know, when everything was happening with Trindlespring Trade Center, several of us spent a lot of time looking at the E-code, not realizing that it was outdated and, you know, thinking that warehousing at the time was conditional and then it turned out it was permitted. Like, that was a pretty big in our face confusion. But just this past week, I had someone in the community like messaging me stuff about the ordinances and I was like, are you using the E-code? They're like, yeah. And I was like, you need to be careful because that might not be updated. So my, my point is that if you Google Silver Spring Township ordinances, the first thing that comes up is the E-code and there isn't clear instruction on what, you know, is updated versus not updated. The second thing that comes up is a PDF to a zoning ordinance, but it says draft 2022. So I don't know if that's one we can work off of or not. I assume not because we've made updates since. The third one's the E-code. Then there's a planning and zoning link, but it all says draft on that. And then the fifth one finally gets you to like an ordinances PDF format page. And I think this might be where, where you would need to look, but I'm just, I'm just not sure. So anyway, I, you know, I work on my computer all day, every day. I navigate stuff and I figure if I'm having trouble locating things, other people probably are too. And I just wanted to lift it up again to see if there's any way we can just make it a little more clear as to what people should be looking at and where and kind of helping with the search engine optimization for it, just so, you know, people aren't confused in the township.
Thanks, Ricky. Ray, that's in progress, right?
It is, it is. Yeah, our, our intent this year is in 2025 to codify.
By the end of the year, is that where we're looking at?
Yes, and this, that will ensure then, at that point, when it's codified, at that point, there would be one, one document to be able to view.
I mean, and is the goal to keep that updated whenever there's a new resolution?
The answer is yes.
Perfect.
Yes, Ricky.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ricky. Scott, anybody else online? Okay, final call. All right, we'll move on then from public comment to consent agenda. Comments or questions from the board?
I have, I have a correction. Sean, on the transcript for the done by the stenographer, I need to clarify, page 53, line 16, I think it was. She used over at Lons and then tracked, it should have been Lowes. I was using that as an example during that and I think she misunderstood, should be Lowes, L-O-W-E-S, the old store over here. For a correction then on that.
Okay, that's, and that's separate from the minute, so we can have her correct that transcript.
Okay, that's fine. And then also, Tyler, we need a invoice from LB's for almost $10,000. Is that the emissions on the truck?
Yeah, so it needed, needed the whole NOx component, the module, and then the particle, the, the diesel particle filter internally needed to be replaced, so the, in the, something with the DEF as well was off in that truck, yeah.
That's all I need.
Yep.
Thanks, Dave. Any, any other comments? We will pull 6A for further discussion. Anything else from the board? All right, then I'll look for a motion excluding 6A.
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion from Laura. Is there a second?
Second.
Harry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed, if any. That motion carries. All right, 6A. We are looking to potentially amend that if there's any discussion or a motion from the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve a 30-day extension for the Silver Spring Community Fire Company with the condition, no expenditure over $5,000 without board or township approval.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Any discussion? I'll look for a second.
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor of the motion, say.
Chairman, sorry, before you have that vote, just because it was a, sort of a, an either-or, board or township approval.
Yeah.
Is it the intent to allow the township manager or staff to, to approve certain?
All right, I'll, I'll clarify that. It would have to be township manager and, and board approval, like it would come to the township manager and then the board knows anything over $5,000.
Okay, obviously for non, non-emergency.
Yeah, yeah.
Because some things in the emergency services are not emergencies.
Yeah, and, and that was why I brought up the 5,000, because I think it gives them a little leeway for, so.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Thank you. Solicitor Schultz, motion on the table from Dave. Was there a second?
Second.
Laura, Laura, second. All.
Nancy had seconded already.
Yeah, you had initially, okay. Nancy, second. That motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any. That motion carries. Under unfinished business, we have ordinance 2025-02. Any discussion on this item? I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion from Harry. Is there a second?
Second.
Laura, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any. That motion carries. Resolution 2025-13, this is, has been a topic of discussion for a few months. Establishing rules and guidelines for towing. Solicitor Schultz, did you want to brief on this? I know you sent us a memo.
Yeah, and I can also, there's, there's a resolution in front of you. I'll, I'll run through the summary of the provisions because I know there are a number of representatives from the towing companies here, here tonight that don't, don't have the, the resolution in front of them. And then I'll, I'll lean on Chief Robenstein for any sort of operational questions that, that you may have. So the board's discussed this a couple, a couple of times at least. We had a meeting, Chief Robenstein and I did, with the towing companies to try to find a, a way to, to make sure there's a fair playing, playing field for the towing companies and, and customers of the towing companies where there would be referrals made by generally, generally the township, township police on, on scenes where the, where towing might be necessary. I'll skip over all the definition section of the, of the resolution, but the, the overall concept of this, this resolution was sort of a, a middle ground between doing an RFQ and having an ordinance. Some municipalities have full-blown ordinances that look somewhat like this, this resolution. So it has the teeth of, of, of law. In this resolution, what we, we try to provide to the, to the board is something that provides that middle ground where the, the teeth in it is that there would be a rotation of towing companies. There would be a list of towing companies that would be used for these referrals on, on scenes. And that if they violated the resolution, they, they'd simply come off, off the list for a period of a year. And with all this said, as I go forward, it's a draft. It's something for the, the board to discuss and, and figure out how, how we want to go, to go forward. The, the resolution provides authority to, to remove an impound with the, with the chief or any police officer or authorized employee of, of the, the police department designated to, to order to be removed, order to have vehicles removed, just kind of generally speaking, or to make referrals to towing companies for someone who might be out on the, on the road. Maybe it doesn't require a police order for removal. The person just wants a, a referral to a, to a towing company while the, while the police are on the scene. It establishes minimum qualifications. I'll, I'll go through these in some, some detail for those here who are interested. It would require towing companies to meet, meet qualifications, including owning and operating at least one wrecker that is in safe mechanical condition, properly titled, inspected and registered. The wrecker is to be owned or leased by the, the towing company and should not be used or operated by or for any other towing company. All wreckers will be clearly marked with the towing company's name and telephone number on each side of the vehicle. All wreckers will be equipped with appropriate safety equipment, fire extinguishers, vests, the typical, typical items that a wrecker should have. Towing companies will provide their employees training on the proper cleanup of accident debris and roadways. They'll have established place of business and storage facility of its own or a storage facility with, which has a contractual arrangement to use. The towing company will be directly accessible 24 hours a day by no more than one phone number. The employment of answering machines or other such devices is not considered as making the company directly accessible. All towing companies and their respective storage facilities used for impoundment of vehicles towed at the request of township shall be located within the township or adjacent municipalities. The storage facility shall be owned or leased by the towing company owner. The storage facility shall comply with zoning regulations applicable in jurisdiction where the facility is located. The storage facility shall be at minimum enclosed by a secured fence or building. When enclosed by a fence, the fence shall be a minimum of six feet in height. Kind of goes into details on the, on the fence. Facility shall be regularly open for conduct of business, receiving of payments due, release of vehicles a minimum of 40 hours Monday through Friday between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. The towing company owner is responsible for the security of the stored vehicles. It requires insurance that the companies carry at least 500,000 in combined limits for automobile liability insurance, including collision, workers compensation, garage keepers liability insurance and sort of the typical insurance that towing companies should normally have. Anyway, it establishes as an option, and Chief can talk about the, sort of the, the operational challenge, this, challenges this, this may have, a towing rotation. There was discussion with the towing companies that kind of went, ran the, ran the gamut on that issue, whether there should be a rotation, whether there should be some seniority or there's just kind of a list that you, you run through in, in some sort of way. And then it has a number of general regulations that the, again, the towing, towing companies to be available to tow 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's going to obviously remove, remove vehicles safely. It requires a that no towing company owner shall have misdemeanor, misdemeanor criminal convictions or their employees, and it lists out the applicable criminal statutes, the homicide and sexual offenses and that, that sort of thing. Theft and things that you'd be concerned about, you know, someone having interactions with, with the public. And they'll, they'll probably tell you too that they have, have a requirement to do, do those, those criminal checks on their employees anyway. Invoices from the towing companies that are rendered under the authority of the resolution are to list a, a phone number of a township official that's designated to receive complaints. That was some of the feedback that we got from the board. And the invoices are to remain on file for at least one year from billing and, and will be made to the township upon request. Again, that was feedback that we received from the board. Some of the prohibited acts that are outlined by, by the resolution, so these are things that if you violate it, township can remove you from the list. Responding, towing or moving a vehicle from, from or within public property without the consent of the owner or operator of the vehicle without being summoned. Arriving at a scene without being requested to, to do so by the, the township. That was some feedback that we got in the meeting with the towing companies. That it would be a violation of the resolution to approach any vehicle operator or passenger at the scene. That it would be a violation of the resolution to approach any vehicle operator or passenger at the scene of an incident or accident to solicit a towing job. And a violation or a towing company to bill or collect payment for any service that was not fully rendered. Including but not limited to incomplete toes, partial roadside assistance, or any other service that was not completed as agreed upon. Or any charges for services that do not reflect the actual services provided and completed. It also, I think there was feedback from from the board specifically, a concern about. The instances where someone might be ready to pick up the vehicle, but the towing company says they're not ready to have it picked up. And it gets held over the weekend and and folks get get charged for that. That's probably more than a summary that I just gave you, but I wanted to make sure everybody here had at least the opportunity to 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 hear hear that out. So that now that's that's up for the the board to to discuss. Take comment on it or or questions on it.
Thanks Sean. Dave?
Sean, question, you had in there that in the township or a surrounding municipality, can we leave it strictly? We we have enough businesses in the township. I would just assume where it's individuals that are either paying rent to someone that pays taxes. Or themselves pays taxes. I don't think it's fair if we open it up around. We I think we have enough companies that we can cover it and be fair about it.
You you could certainly do that. Some of the some of the discussion, it was a very minor part of the discussion that we had with the towing companies. And I don't think this was stated expressly necessarily, but there may be an instance where. No one else is available at the time and you may have to go outside of the companies that are directly within the township. So it gives the gives the police that that opportunity. Now, you what you might want to do is you could. You could you so again, you could you could limit it to companies within township or maybe prioritize companies within the township. And then as a backup have have.
We would call and there we have four on the list or whatever the number is, and for some ungodly reason, they're all tied up. That's one thing. But I think we should prioritize those that either directly pay taxes or indirectly through rents. They should be getting our business because they're the reason that, you know, we're able to operate. And then the. The wording, I I think that they should have to be in a commercially zoned property. It should be zoned for that by right. I don't, we years ago, we had an issue where somebody ran their their business out of a house. They tried to jump on the towing. And that was when we had one company and they had no storage yard. They they weren't even in a commercially zone. They were running out of their garage. I would like it where it's by right, wherever it's zoned for it. And and they meet the criteria, they're able to tow.
Yeah, I think the way I drafted is that they'd have to be compliant, so they could be a non-conforming use that's still compliant under the MPC.
Where I have a problem with a non-conforming use, somebody comes in, they build a garage at their house. They start squatting with the towing business and then they say, well, we end up not fighting it. It becomes a non-conforming use. Is that fair to those that are paying commercial rent or have a commercial building that they're paying taxes? Well, when when that occurs, to me, that that's not setting a good example. Because we'll just entice people to do that. And we fought our battles. I don't know. There's some guys here I know that have towing business. I see a couple, all my new Mr. Latuka, I know Sam, C N H here. I'd like to hear from them. I know those individuals have commercial property. They're paying a premium on rent or to buy something. I don't think it's fair to those individuals. I don't know if there's anybody else here, but I'd like to hear from them how they feel about that.
Yeah, and there might be surprise or like a distinction there in in the way you frame that is. There what you described as someone who's violating the ordinance and that perhaps the township becomes aware of it, but just doesn't enforce that ordinance. There's a distinction between that and a company that maybe was zoned was zoned for towing at one point. And you've changed the zoning zoning and now they're not conforming. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at because like I know we've had people in the past with a multitude of businesses. That have moved into residential zone or an ag zone and we we never fought the issue when we should have. And that that would be what I'm looking at because I don't think it makes a fair playing field for the individuals I talked about that are paying rent or own. A building that are paying what I call their fair share tax. I I don't think that's fair. And I know there was a discussion on the set fees. Was anybody in favor of maybe averaging like. The three coming up with like a median and then saying that's the price?
I think the general feedback we got was that that was impractical because of the different business models. It would make it difficult and they could certainly speak to that themselves, but I didn't, I don't, I don't know. Chief, you don't remember hearing anything positive about that, do you? No.
Well, yeah, the the issue I would have would be, I get towed, I'm I get the lowest guy, you get towed, you get the highest guy. I think like I would like to see some sort of set rate and maybe have a discussion with those individuals where either that or there's a cap. And, you know, like I seen on my phone the other week, it came up and I I believe that. These smartphones listen to us. There is, I think it was Montana. Highway Patrol had a six thousand dollar tow bill for one of their towing companies for a few mile tow. And they ended up getting kicked off. I it just happened to come up on my phone and I read that and I thought to myself, you know, how fitting. You know, like all, we wouldn't be at this point if people would have used self-restraint. And and I'm all for everybody making money in this country. It's free enterprise, but then there's also. I think the image the township gets when, you know, I get calls from insurance companies and or individuals talking about, you know, like. Excessive charges and and that's why we're we're at right now because people couldn't control and do things, I think, on a fair and level playing field. I would like to see maybe if you could have a meeting with them and come up with something. I'd like to see like some sort of structure where there's a cap. And I'm just talking on on cars. I know when you get into heavy duty towing, that's that's a whole nother animal because there's usually a lot more involved. But I just on the car, light duty towing. And then the other thing is, and I I think you kind of hit on it, but I I would like it to find. No subletting of work if we we call X Y Z tow, that's who gets it if they're unavailable. I think it was kind of in there, but I just want it stated. I don't want to see people subletting work. If if they get work, it's for them and only them. I know that that was brought up by an individual to me and and I agree with it. That's the fairest way. And maybe what we can do is if we get halfway through the year and we see. One or two companies, for whatever reason, with a lot more, we can send a few and we try to balance it out that everybody gets. I think a fair and equitable share of the towing. I'm not. We we need to work together. I think there's enough work in this township that it can go around. That we we work something to keep, not that it has to be exact, but somewhat close for all the individuals.
Any other comments from the board? Harry? So. The I I can see the operational challenge with rotating that list. I think Sean, you touched on that and Chief, I don't know if you have thoughts on that. It seems like who who maintains it? How does it get updated? What if there's back-to-back incidents, right? So.
Yeah, I've reached out to some surrounding areas, agencies, North Middleton. Township gave me what they're using. I got with our IT folks to make sure we could try it. I think it's worth something we could give a shot. I can't promise success with it until we give it a go. But I wasn't going to try it until we got direction from you all. I I certainly wasn't going to go through all that, try to get the officers to do it. And then have you say, no, we're going to use one company and that's it. Cause then I want to try to do it in as few steps as possible for the officers. Cops hate change, even when it's good change. They just reflexively hate change. So I want to keep the number of changes I can to a a minimum so that we're doing it the right way. But I I think we have a system that could work. We just, and it'll have some hiccups as we go. And and it kind of factors in that, that if it's. Miller and Sam's turn per the list, but it's right beside Latuca's. They would call Latuca's and they would document why they called a hundred feet away from Latuca's. And then the next accident would go back to Miller and will go back to whoever is next on the list.
Um, Chris, this is a question. What if each platoon kept in that way? You know, say one platoon starts with Miller or Sam, the next one, they start with Latuca, but they have the same list. And they go through, then that way, you know, like they don't have to know what the other platoon, who they called. They know.
Well, with what we're going to have set up or that we should be able to do, it's going to be live. It's going to be in real time. So they're going to be able to pull it up right off the server in their car. They're going to be able to see, well, I know. I know Carl had an accident that he was handling an hour ago. I I didn't hear who he called. They're going to be able to see it instantly. So again, as we have to have some training with them, remind them, this is what you need to do. This is how you need to do it. Make sure we're following the list and we'll be able to see then. It it'll make it easier for the lieutenant and I to also make sure that that's being done.
Yeah, and I'm sorry you have to do this. I mean, I know it's a hassle for you and Dave, but I was tired of getting the complaints. I mean, and it's no reflection on you guys. I just it got old hearing them at least, I'd say every three weeks, so.
I know there's some towing companies with us tonight. Any you guys want to provide any input? I mean, I know there's been some discussion with staff. Yeah, come on up.
My name's Barb. My husband Sam is Miller and Sam's. When you said about wreckers. There's a big difference between a wrecker, a light duty truck, rollback. So some of the towing companies are saying about, well, you have to have.
Let me just make sure you're closer to the mic there.
Yeah, Barb, there's a definition in the ordinance that includes rollback.
Right, so what's the difference? Because some of the towing companies are saying, well, you're going to have to have both.
It it just says you have to have a one. That that's the way the resolution's set up. You have to have one. And the and the definition of wrecker is is broad, so it would cover all of those options.
Can we add to the definition that they have to have a piece of equipment that will not damage the vehicle? Cause I knew somebody has an all-wheel drive car. If somebody would show up with. Like a wrecker, like a wheel lift and try to drag it or whatever, there's damage. That they have to have equipment that's suitable for the type of vehicle just to protect us.
I I think that's covered under one of the other qualifications or general regulations that they have to be able to safely remove the vehicle.
And then just one more thing. I know like when we do low riders or we tow for Lawrence Chevrolet. So we do a lot of the Corvettes. We have special boards. We have no problem with the vehicle owner videotaping. But it has already come back to me where other towing companies will go up and actually take their phone from them. And stuff like that. So could it be put in there that it's okay? I mean, they have a right to videotape their vehicle being loaded up, whether it's a wreck, it's a breakdown. As long as a towing company knows that you're being recorded.
Yeah, we we can include that. I mean, if you're in the public right of way, you can't just take someone's phone from them. Chief, how do you feel about that one?
Yeah, they just need to let us know when it's happening.
I don't want them to come up and rip the body cam off.
I can show you a couple of videos of that.
It wasn't good results at the end.
That might be a felony.
But I mean, it's just, we have no problem with people videotaping. It's their property and it's our responsibility. So if a customer is asking, you know, as long as they let the tower, the tow driver know, then it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, there's so there's there's a little bit of. As long as it's in public, because there's wiretap law, as long as there's whatever is being recorded isn't in some private space in a vehicle. Or something like that where their privacy would be expected. I think that's okay. What you're describing is they're out on the street. They're just recording it and that's right. So they'd they'd be able to to record that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input?
With with you saying that you ha can't have somebody, a subcontractor essentially. So you've got guys that got one company or one truck. If that truck breaks down, several of us in the township would loan somebody a truck. So whether it be from a company outside the township or a company within the township. Do you shut the guys, the one man band down in the township because you have to borrow a truck from someone?
If if let me just, so tha- that's a case where com- company A truck goes down. Company B says you can borrow our truck. Company A is running that truck, right?
I would get magnets made to put over top to cover yourself. Cause I think the way it says is you're supposed to have the truck lettered with your name on it. It might not be bad to have magnetic signs if we do this, just so that if your name's on it temporarily, but. You know.
I'd probably want that if I was your attorney too.
Yeah, I think the big thing, Dave, was just that if we go on the next list and, you know, this time it's HJ. And we say, county, call HJ, tell them what we need. And he responds. I can't make it. I'm tied up. Then we would move to the next one versus him saying, okay. And then he calls somebody else and said, hey, I need you to do me a favor and swing over and get it. That way there's no.
Well, and that's what.
That's all.
I I want to keep it fair. Like that way, somebody can't sublet it out. Cause that was brought up to me by one of the individuals and I agree a hundred percent. It would not be fair if you're.
And it also will help our officers because they're going to know county, the nine-one-one dispatcher will tell them. We got a hold of HJ there and we're out twenty minutes. And then somebody else shows up, that officer knows, wait a minute, this is not. And it just helps them trying to figure out, is somebody happened to come by? Is somebody trying to hop the call? Or is it just legit and they didn't get the updated info?
Yeah, what what teeth do we have for those that I call rec jump that hear it on the monitor?
Again, if if I'm the officer on scene and I request the nine-one-one dispatcher to get me a tow. And I'll tell them who because they don't have, they cannot have access to our our list, our rotating list. I, as the officer, would tell them, this is who I want you to call. And if another one shows up, that's on me to say. Or my partner who's helping me because they've heard who I've called and they've heard county respond back. He's en route, she's en route with a blank minute ETA that that we would then say, oh, we already got so-and-so coming. Well, I'm here. We already got so-and-so coming.
It's not fair to who you dispatch because they're running fuel and labor costs.
And I think with the list, everybody's going to understand. Okay.
Yeah, and and not only that, right? So they the wrong company shows up scene and and the police say, you know, it's not yours, get out of here, right? There's also built in the resolutions that you could use that to just take them off the list and sus- basically suspend them for a year. So they have, there's that consequence. There's there's some additional teeth in that.
But what if they're not on our list? Say it's somebody that for whatever reason wasn't on it. Or there's people migrating around towing. Our officers can tell them to leave or they can be cited, right? Okay.
Come on up if you could.
Pennsylvania, you have the right to your own tow provider. So how are you going to control that? When your officers show up on scene, you dispatch a company, you call HJ, you call Miller and Sam's, you call us. And the owner of the vehicle then comes over and says, I've actually called AAA and they're responding.
Right, so the officers to check ahead of time. They're to ask the owner.
Right, so where where do we fall into that when we show up and they say, no, AAA is going to take it because the customer is going to be irate that they have AAA. And they should be able to tow the car for fifty bucks.
I'm not saying it's never going to happen, but it should not happen that you are called out if AAA has already been called. The officers are supposed. Oh, yeah. This is only, this ordinance is only for toes that we're calling for. If I'm driving home, my car breaks down, it just, I blow a tire or I run out of gas and I I can call whoever I want as a private citizen. And that's, it can be.
AAA does accident calls and stuff like that.
But I mean, it could be anywhere. It could be, I really like somebody in Hanover. I want them to come up and get me. But I mean, it could be anywhere. It could be, I really like somebody in Hanover. I want them to come up and get me.
That's a little far, but I mean, if you're in Silver Springs Township and you call AAA and C and H gets the call for AAA, but you called us. Like they're in the same response time as we are.
Right. It, it's again, I'm not going to say it's never going to happen that. One officer wasn't trying to help because it's a three car crash on the pike on Friday at five o'clock and they call right away. And the, the other officer says, no, they already called AAA. At which point we'll try to cancel it. Yeah.
I am all in favor of some kind of fee if it's in the roadway. For a light duty car, if it's in the roadway, I'm all in favor of going together and, and finding a happy medium between all of us. If it's off the roadway, that's a whole different game. In my, in my, in my opinion, that's a whole different.
I, I agree. Um, we're not, there's things that we can't control, but like. Say, say you get called out, you charge $500 for a wreck. You come out and the next wreck, somebody's getting charged 1,500 or 2,000. I, I think like we, we gotta have.
That's where I'm, I've been in it for a lot of years. A lot of these guys know me. An auto accident in the middle of the intersection only takes so much work. Now, when it goes off the roadway, that's where the, the, the game's over and you got to figure out what needs to happen. But I'm all in favor of that as long, and it also takes the officer out of the, the mix of what is this? Is it in the roadway or is it not in the roadway? And that way it kind of eliminates that.
I recommend to everybody here that ends up getting on the tow. Take a picture if the car is down over that way. If they come to the chief or the township manager, whoever. And they say, I got charged $6,000. It was on the road and you have pictures. It's up on a rock or something where you had to get a crane to lift it, whatever.
Yeah, we take everything we do.
We, we just, we were getting too many complaints and we just want to make a fair playing field. And that way people don't feel like they're getting ripped off.
That's all we want. And I'm, I'm all, all for township. Keep it out of the, uh, hand in township, stuff like that. If you're not, if you don't have a business in township. I mean, there's enough, I think there's four of us. I think there's four of us in a township. That should be more than enough. You should never, you should never be able to call all four of us and all four of us are going to tell you that we don't have availability. It's not going to happen.
No.
Especially now with HJ with like 6,000 trucks in their parking lot. So. It's just, but all right.
Thank you. We, we do ask the people if there's a wreck, if they're able to speak. Do you have a provider you would like, right?
We always ask right away. Some people, uh, as soon as we try to just move things along, it's all, oh no. Sam's my uncle and I know he, he won't be as bad as, you know, there's always something. So again, it's never perfect because sometimes people are trying to help others and, but for them, yes. That's the number one question. Do you have a preference?
Okay.
Thanks, chief. Are we ready to move this forward or some additional changes?
As long as they maybe have a meeting with them and try to come up with some sort of. Fee max, fee cap or set, you know, fee for like we talked about with those that qualify. I'm okay with the other changes I asked about.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll make those revisions and then we'll try to get something together in the next month or so.
Okay.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Ray. Thanks, Chris, and thanks, Dave, for all the work and anybody else that showed up at the meetings. That are, that's involved from the towing end, so.
I'll look for a motion then to table just to give staff additional time, one more month to, to tidy that up.
I'll make a motion we table.
Dave moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Harry's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any, that motion carries. Moving on to subdivision and land development, we have a preliminary land development plan for Coast Road tract. Looks like we have some applicants this evening. You're welcome to come up.
Thank you. So my name's Mike Brinkash. I'm with Brinkash and Associates. Um, we prepared the, um, the plans that are here in front of here this evening. So I'm going to see if my laser pointer works was, there it is. Okay. So yeah, so this is actually the, um, the Sunday tract out on Coast Road. This is Coast Road here, Appalachian. Appalachian Drive is, um, back at the, at the western end of the property. Down here is a railroad. It's Norfolk Southern. Um, we have an existing mobile home community that sets up in here. Across the road is, um, Kenworth Truck Supplies. And then up to the north is Penske Truck Rentals. And so what we're proposing here is, um, the proposed use is storage depot slash facility. It's containing 300, 385 parking spots, um, for trailer storage. So we're looking at accessing Coast Road in two locations. Again, these are for trailer, trailer storage. We're also proposing a 45,000 square foot. Um, it's an accessory office slash maintenance building. So we were at planning commission, um, the week before last and essentially planning is recommended. Conditional approval. There's also, I believe there's four waivers that were also recommended for approval. And, um, staff as well as recommended approval for those. So we had a, we had a really good discussion with planning. Even though with some of the landscape requirements, we, we met the, we met the ordinance. Um, the developer has agreed to address some concerns that planning had and specifically. Specifically, there was concerns about some screening here up along the, the mobile home community. So what, what's happened here is we've added, um, originally we had Arbor Vita five foot on center. Since planning commission, we've added a second row of the Arbor Vita five foot on center. And we've also added, um, proposed, uh, privacy fence. So the privacy fence would run with the slots just for the area here. That's immediately adjacent to the, um, you know, to the, to the mobile home community. We also, um, again, I don't know if it was necessarily required, but it was requested by planning commission to provide security fencing. Around the entire site. So the, again, the applicant has, he's agreed to, uh, provide that fencing and gate system. Um, and so basically, you know, I think we've, we've at least, uh, done what planning has asked us to do. And you know, essentially if you have here to answer any questions or anything anybody has on this.
I do have some questions. Um, there were a few things not answered at the planning commission meeting. Um, we were talking about, is this going to be a 24 seven operation in terms of the vehicles coming in and parking? So any time of the day, they would be coming in and out?
Right. So at, at this time, we're, we're not proposing any restrictions. We're proposing that the operation would run in accordance with state and local federal regulations.
And the maintenance, uh, facility, uh, building, do we know what the hours were going to be for that? Is there just eight to five or something like that? Or is this also any time of the day?
Um, once again, I think as we said in the, in the planning commission meeting, they're, we're not proposing to restrict anything. But we would think that, we would think that, um, the service would only be like normal hours. In other words, there wouldn't be, you know, necessarily mechanic in there 24 hours a day. That would be more of a, that would be more of a normal thing.
Okay. And, uh, the tractor, well, the, the trucks that you were talking about, would they be empty or full, uh, trailers or?
So it, so it's unknown. Um, they could be empty. They could contain things. Yeah. Essentially it's just, it's a extra storage for any local warehouses or any other facilities. To be able to store their, their trailers.
Okay. Now I do appreciate about the security fence that, that you're willing to, to do that. Um, that obviously is very important for safety for both parties. Um, now was there any consideration? I had mentioned about a berm perhaps. Um, I realize you're having then two layers of landscaping there, but was there any consideration to a berm? My, my thinking is because of the sound, if you have something up higher, that might help prevent some of the sound from carrying to the mobile home community. Um, was that considered at all?
We gave a consideration, um, and after looking at, uh, essentially after looking at the site and, uh, you know, change in elevation, things like that. We feel that adding these two extra layers being one, the, the extra are provided. And then also the extra fence is going to provide, um, equal or more protection than, than trying to build a berm in this area.
Okay. Okay.
That, that, uh, planning commission meeting was on March 6th. Do you have an ECP? To the area, entry control point?
An entry control point.
Yeah. Because if you have a security fence. Um, so some of that's going to be open. Uh, let's say you have kids in a trailer park and they decide, oh, well, we'll climb the fence. Or we'll go into the point where we can get in. Is there going to be an entry control point?
Yeah. I mean, as far as, um. See here, I apologize. I grabbed the wrong laser pointer. This one's multi-function. The, uh, yeah. So, so the, these two areas here would be gated. Um, and again, the entire, the entire fence would come around. We believe we're probably going to have to gate it both sides of, uh, of the power line here. And again, the fence will go around. I'm not sure if I'm understanding. I'm, I'm not.
Well, sometimes when you have a security fence around an area and you have an entry control point. Uh, if you don't have someone on that entry control point, anyone can walk into the area. Or anyone can drive into the area. And that's, that's what I'm asking. If you're having a safety fence.
Right.
Maybe you want to have a point where. People can control what's coming in and what's leaving.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, no, definitely. That, that would be part of the whole security system here.
Is that 24, 24 seven?
I would think so.
Security?
I would think so.
Uh, the other thing is you're going to have probably lighting.
Yes.
And that light is going to be pretty much all over the place because you're going to have places where the lights will be, where the trailers are. How are you going to control that since you have the trailer park next door?
Yeah. So we do actually have an, um, a lighting plan that was prepared in accordance with all township ordinances. I don't, not sure Scott, if you're able to pull that up, but, but we did a full lighting analysis to show. Um, that we meet ordinance at the property lines where we don't have, you know, glare going on to the properties. And again, in accordance with, uh, all of the, all of the lighting ordinances in the township.
And I think the other thing that was brought up during the, uh, planning commission meeting was. Um, have you talked to the people that live in the trailer court at all? And at that point you said, no.
Correct.
Um, have you had that conversation with them?
We have not.
Have not? To see if they have any issues that they might say, well, you know, we have 12 kids running around here and stuff. And we want to make sure they're safe and stuff. And you can guarantee them that, you know, there's going to be a security fence so that they know.
Yeah, no, we have not. Um, I know there were some residents or at least appeared to be residents at the planning meeting. And you know, based off of those conversations was the decision to put the security fence in.
Right.
Um, which obviously that would be the, you know, that would be a, a huge step to, to securing both ways. Like you said, safety of the outside people that would be potentially trespassing. And you know, also, uh, safety for the, um, for the occupant of the property here. Uh, security, safety as far as things not getting broken into, things like that.
Add on the security fence and also in the entry control point, you're going to have signs. It says authorized personnel only.
Yes.
I, I probably would suggest that you talk to the people that live next door to the facility. And maybe they have, might have some suggestions that might help. So that you don't have any safety issues.
No, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harry. Mike, a couple of questions.
Sure.
You answered that the trailers could be, uh, empty or full. Are they, is there loading and unloading happening in? In a cross docking situation, or you're just saying sometimes they'll be stored there full, sometimes empty, but there isn't transfer of product?
No, there's no transfer of product. So it just, it's, they're bringing the trailers and setting their parking.
Okay. And is it just the trailers or do you imagine tractor parking as well?
No, it's just a, it's just.
Trailer storage. Okay. I'm just curious, not ordinance related. Is it, is the model that it's one company or is it something that could be leased from, from multiple companies? They could lease space either ad hoc or as needed. Is that kind of, you mentioned like the surrounding warehouses could use this.
Right.
So if they need temporary storage for six weeks for a couple of trailers or something, that's, that's the business model.
Correct. That's, that's my understanding of it. There's, there's no one company that's, uh, committed here at this point.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for now. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Um. How far is the nearest mobile home to your fence and then to your trailers?
Yeah. So the. A few, few of the homes are actually, they're, they're built near the property line, but we do have. See if the best way, that's probably a good one here. So we're meeting all of the required buffers. Um, I think the, the minimum buffer is 50 feet. And I, I apologize here. I'm just going to pull my half size out. I'm having a hard time seeing that. So. Yeah. I mean, looking at the, where the, where the mobile homes are very close to the property. Which is right up in that area there, you could see that there's no, there's no trailer parking or anything right in that area. So really the closest spot is going to be. Down in this area where it affects a couple, when I'm saying affects, it looks like it's probably in the neighborhood of. Like 75 to a hundred feet away. Um, just that one little corner again.
So if that were your property and this is my mobile home, I'm not going to be, there's still a distance. That wall there compared to where I am.
Yes. And in that particular location, there's actually a, a very thick tree line that exists there right now. So in addition to that, we're filling in what Arbor Vita, another, Arbor Vita, and then the, um, privacy fence.
And the storage of product in these trailers, what, what assurances do we have that that's? Something that's safe to store? I mean, is that anything that anybody thought about?
Yes.
Thought of a load of dynamite or something? And I mean.
Yeah. So I mean, uh, when you're talking, you know, things like dynamite, things like that, there's a lot of, lots of regulations.
I, you know, I don't know.
Right. Now there's a lot, there's lots of regulations, uh, you know, above and beyond that. Again, everything's going to be consistent with all. State, federal, local laws. Um, so you know, anything that I guess, anything could be held in a tractor, trailer potentially, you know, could be, could be stored there.
So it could be a fuel truck.
I, that I don't know. I don't, I don't think they would do that. I don't know though. I don't, I can't answer that. I'm sorry.
Well, they won't usually let fuel in them either in case of a leak and it's unattended.
Yeah, that's, I don't think, yeah, I don't think they can do that. I didn't want to say that, but I don't think they can do that.
My law, I don't think they can let a truck like that.
Okay. So if I'm bringing my trailer in there, where do I go after I drop the trailer? I'm going to park my trailer on your lot, but where do I go with my truck?
Yeah. So the, uh, the, the, this is all like, um, you know, self-controlled. So they would. You know, a lot of times if they're, they're bringing a trailer from one space to another, they would.
First of all, there's somebody there to let me in.
Yeah. Again, there'd be a lot of times the, the gates will be self-controlled, maybe key fob or key code.
Oh, so there may be nobody there. I have to find my own space.
Again, I don't know if the logistics of that have been, have been worked out totally. Um, but.
But I'm kind of curious, if you have, you're going to have, uh, 385 trucks parked there. Where are those people going with their tractors?
Yeah, I'll jump in Nancy. We, we've been involved in a couple of these and, uh, generally either one company will, will lease the whole thing out and it'll be controlled. There could be maybe a, a, a couple of these areas, but it's not going to be someone bringing in onesie twosies. Most likely it'll be one firm that'll have the whole operation. They'll have their own security system. They'll, they'll use, they'll bring in, they'll store, store things here, bring them back and forth to their warehouses as they need them. But it's, it's not a high traffic generator.
But where do I go when I drop my trailer? That, are these local people that drop a trailer and go home? Are they people that go and stay?
Generally be a company that would lease. With a different, the, the warehouse or two in the area, they'll need additional storage. It's going to be probably one or two companies that operate these things. It's not going to be like a free for all. Like people come in, drop one off. They'll, they'll be, they'll have an agreement with a warehouse. You can store your 50 units here for a month. So it's not like a free for all people going in and out.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying, where did the 300 people go that were driving those trucks? I'm just curious.
They'll, they'll come in with a tractor. They'll come in, drop the trailer off and leave.
With the tractor?
Correct.
And take it home or?
To wherever they came from, another warehouse, wherever they have it.
But it's not staying in the area or you, I mean, I'm just.
It's not been, it's not been determined which facilities would be leasing this at this, at this current time.
We always say we don't have enough room for truckers to spend the night. And I was kind of curious.
Yeah.
Nancy, this, this isn't for like people to park. Like this would be.
I get that.
Yeah, like.
But they're still have a vehicle that I want to know where it's going.
So say for instance, the, someone owns a warehouse down the road and, and they need to store trailers. So bring them over with a tractor, they'll drop them off, they'll leave. When they need them in a month, they'll come pick them up. It's, it's, it's a similar concept to these, like what Mr. Ferris. It's, it's, it's a similar concept to these, like what, uh, Mr. Ferris did with his lot up here and Faulkner did. The additional area to store their product, when they need it, they come get it.
But that's the, 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 the way to make it go. It's all one, it's all self-contained. It's not a trailer and a truck.
Yeah, there was actually a traffic study that we performed on, on a similar lot in the area. Mr. Moyer can, can comment if he wishes, but it's not a high volume turnover. Um, there's not people going in and out all the time.
To my next question. Cost Road. When I come to this place, I would come on Cost Road, correct?
Correct.
And then when I leave, which way am I going to go?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in this traffic one, the traffic one. The majority of the traffic as shown by the traffic study goes right out to the Carlisle Pike. Okay? But we agreed to put signage out there to have a sign, Carlisle Pike right there, get to eighty-one. So majority of the traffic study shows the trips go to the Pike. That's where most people go. But there will be signs directing them to the Pike. Could someone come out and take a right on Cost Road if they're going that direction? Absolutely.
But that's currently posted no trucks.
That's what I'm asking. Can we post that? No trucks?
It's already posted.
Is it posted already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's not a place I don't, I just don't want trucks going back there.
Yeah, when you get past the old IBM building, that's the end of it. The, from Mary Deitch's farm area back through, it's no, it was no.
So that's a guarantee. I'll, I'll have a no right turn for no trucks or whatever.
Well, a truck, a truck could turn and then go to one of the immediate facilities right there, but as, as Dave said, it's, there's no trucks down the road.
Depending on where their entrance is, you could put no right turn because they're going to be down, I think, past them.
Sure.
No right turn except local delivery or something.
Yeah, that's fine. We'd certainly cooperate with that.
Alright, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I left them go. If you have reefer trailers, is there going to be, because I knew some guys will let them run to keep them cooled. I knew if you were in the plan, there had to be something sketchy, John. Um, so when they, they, they have the refrigerated trailers, the reefers, like, you know, they'll kick on and off. Is there anything they can do maybe to keep, if they have reefers, to keep them away from the residential area as much as they can? If they're going to run them.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Because that, that's on and off and it's the, the noise, um.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think they could, I, I think they could certainly encourage them to go on the other side of the property.
Yeah.
I, you know, we wouldn't want to commit to prohibiting.
No, no, no. Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying if you could have it where you encourage them to keep them as far as you can. I understand, you know, the imperfect world, but if, like you have the areas away from the, uh, community there, if you can encourage them, if they are running reefers, a lot of guys don't. There's select businesses that do that.
Right.
So that, that would be the only thing I had a concern about.
Okay.
Nancy brought up a, a good suggestion about, you know, someone parking their fuel truck in, in the area. And, and I know that probably won't happen. But if someone has an empty fuel truck, that would be dangerous, not with the fuel itself, because the fuel, the fumes from the empty fuel truck. Do we have, are there some type of regulations that, you know, certain trucks that you can't park there? Like if you have an empty truck, let's say you're delivering a couple hundred thousand shoes or something like that, and it's an empty truck and you park it in a lot. Are there any regulations that says that, you know, there are certain trucks that you can't park versus other trucks that you can?
I'm not aware of. Yeah, the, Harry, the, the ones that we, we've seen, I've never seen a fuel truck in one of these.
Well, I.
Yeah.
I, I understand.
From a practical perspective.
You could have, you could have a truck full of batteries or whatever, uh, could be anything.
Yeah. Generally the trucks are empty. The, the trailers are empty.
Okay. Is there anything that, you know, when, let's say Dave wants to pull his truck in there and it's empty and he wants to go home to wherever. If, if it's an empty truck, um,
Well, we're talking about trailers here though.
Oh yeah, I know trailers. Is there a list of what they can park there and what they can't park there? I guess that's what.
There would generally be restrictions on any hazardous materials being stored in here, just like any other facility.
How would you know if you, you're getting in with a key card and you're not getting in by someone that's manning the gate?
Yeah.
Per se. I mean, you could park anything.
There, there's no tenant here yet. There's, there's no, there's no finalization of a tenant. However, it's designed like other facilities. They're going to be empty trailers for the, for probably a hundred percent of them or close to there. And it's going to be an organization that controls the whole situation. They're only going to give key cards to their people to take them in and out. So it's going to be a, a controlled situation, both security wise and what comes in and out. That's how they operate.
Okay, John. Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board? Right. I know we have some public comment online. Yeah, we'll go, we'll go, we'll go here first if anybody's in person wants to add anything. Okay, seeing none, let's go to Clarence. I see his hand is raised. Oh, go ahead, Scott. Who's first?
I was going to, uh, it's Kathy Ricky that.
Okay, Kathy, we'll let you go first.
Hello?
We have you. Go ahead.
Okay, I want to follow up with some questions that, uh, some of the board had asked. And maybe Sean will have to answer this. Uh, Harry brought up about asking if anybody went to the trailer park. Now I know with the trailer park, they don't actually own their trailers. They rent off of the company whoever has them. So is that rule of thumb? I know if you live within a certain amount of yards away, they have to contact the, the property owner. But in this case, it's a trailer park. So they, do they not have to do that? Do they not have to get in touch with anybody? They just got in touch with the trailer park?
Kathy, are you asking if this is a plan by right or if it's a plan by conditional use that would require notification?
Yeah, the notification if you're.
Right. So this is, this is a, this is a plan that is by right, that the MPC does not require notification to adjacent property owners, just like any other land development plan that's by right.
Okay. And then Nancy had brought up about where the trucks are going to go. That as far as where's the trucks going to go, that is always a problem about where people park and empty parking, any, any empty parking lot that you can find, like the Walmart, what I call the Walmart Truck Plaza. But she brought up, uh, where they're going to turn. And then David had said about marking that out by when you come in, Locust Point Road. We know that trucks go whatever way they're going to go to get to the place the quickest as they can. There was a rate, a weight restriction right after you come off, turn left on Locust Point Road. There's a weight restriction sign right there that they're not supposed to go. But is this going to end up like a, a woods drive? Where trucks are going where they're not supposed to? And, and now I think you're going to make that road straight. So it's going to make it all the easier for the trucks to, to come off of Locust Point Road because Locust Point Road is so, so heavily traveled already with dump trucks and everything, and then more tractor trailers, more, there's fuel trucks, we know, but, um, it's, it's just a lot more traveling on that road. And I'd really like to see them stay off of Cost Road. So, and then John, you had said that uh, people were asking, we, we really don't know, John did say that probably they're going to be empty. But what if they're not empty? Like they said, nobody's checking to see what's in the trucks. And we all know there are some shady people. So maybe they will park stuff in there that really shouldn't be parked. How, how do you regulate that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I, I think, I think Kathy, it'd be a controlled situation where, where the, the, the folks operating this are going to have specific agreements with who's going to, who's going to bring trailers there. And they'll have restrictions internally with any lease situation like us, a storage unit would be. Kind of like the one that's being built down on one fourteen. They have specific lease, leasehold stuff. They restrict, they restrict it. If it's not their own trailers, they'll restrict someone they're leasing it to. So they want to have a secure facility, whoever does this, and they want to be safe also and follow the regulations. So they'll have their own self policing here. Um, I, I think that's the way these things work, kind of like a mini storage facility.
And the one along eighty-one has been sitting there for how long? Nobody's in it. It's empty. It's, it's been empty ever since it's, they're done paving. So I just, is this going to end up looking like where the Carlisle Truck Plaza was? That truck after truck after truck? And I think we did a, I had one of my friends in the group do a Google, Google map, and I think they could park four hundred trailers in that section. So it's going to look something like that right along.
I think the one off eighty-one you're referring to, I think that's something the state built for commuters to, to park there for the carpool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's.
No, not that, not that. Uh, no, it's up farther, closer to.
Are you talking about before you get to Carlisle, before you get to, uh?
It's Allen Road.
Yeah, Allen, the Allen Road exit.
Yeah. That, that's the one I sent.
Something I think similar there. I, I, I think that was recently. Yeah, I'm, I'm not real familiar with that site. It's right, right off eighty-one. There's like a trailer parking area.
But is it going to look, is this, this trailer, whatever you call it, drop lot, whatever, going to look like right along Cost, Cost Road and the Carlisle Pike, what used to be the Carlisle Truck Plaza? Is it going to be truck after truck after truck after truck parked like that?
It'll be trailers parked.
I mean trailers.
Yeah, it'd be trailers parked. Uh, it'll be a little different, I think, because there's going to be landscaping all around it. They'll be controlled by gates. So I, I think it's going to be a little different than the one you're referring to. The fact that it's current standards and it's going to landscape. A lot of these other places don't have the landscaping regulations and things of that nature that Mike's put in his plan.
But God bless the people that live in that trailer park. If that's how many trucks are going to be parked in there. Almost four hundred truck, uh, four hundred trailers. God bless them.
Thanks Kathy. That was five minutes. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Better Ricky.
Ricky?
We've just found her.
Hi, can you hear me?
Again?
Okay. Um, first of all, I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors for all of the questions that they're asking. I think it's, it's really clear by the questions you're asking that you're trying to dig deep, um, and make sure this is a good thing for our township and community as a whole. Um, I just have a couple of comments. Um, first thing, I just want to echo what one of the supervisors said. Um, I find it really alarming that this group has not tried to reach out to the people that live right next to them, um, to figure out you know, if they can have a good, good neighbor relationship, um, by any means and just try to mitigate concerns and figure out, you know, what they would be looking for. Um, I think that should be really highly, um, encouraged and if not, you know, required before moving this thing forward. Um, and then I also just wanted to say that, uh, right now my street is dealing with a situation where, uh, there is a group of people who have illegally turned a lot very close to us into a drop lot. And my understanding is that the township is on it and taking care of it. Thank you so much to the township, um, and the zoning officer for acting swiftly to take care of that. Um, but we're basically, you know, dealing with what will be happening, I assume, to these individuals to some capacity. Um, and I've never lived next to a drop lot, but this is, it's kind of crazy. Um, it's twenty-four hours. We are hearing banging, our houses, our house, houses are shaking. Um, people are waking up in the middle of the night. Kids are waking up in the middle of the night. I, all this to say is that, um, this could potentially just like ru- ruin the lives of the people who live in these mobile homes. So I know you all are taking this seriously. Um, I can tell you're taking it seriously, but I just want to put that in perspective that we're talking about the health and safety and just because this is permitted by right um, in this location doesn't mean that we don't have to worry about the health and safety and other larger, um, implications that will really impact folks. Um, so yeah, they, thank you so much for, for the time, for listening and for the consideration.
Thanks Ricky. Clarence?
Good evening. I'm, uh, Clarence Boucher, fifteen Warwick Circle. Uh, I normally physically attend meetings as you guys know. So I'm very appreciative to the supervisors to allow remote access like this when I can't be there. Um, I want to start off by reminding you that under ordinance twenty twenty-three oh four, this developer would have had to, uh, provide a five hundred foot wide parcel between this drop lot and the West Shore manufactured home community to the north that we've been discussing. Of course, under the current plan, uh, under the old and still applicable zoning ordinance, he only needs fifty feet separation. And of course, that's all that's being provided. I do want to remind you, the other reason for that is that this application was submitted on the twenty-second of March, twenty twenty-three. And that very evening is when twenty, is when zoning ordinance twenty twenty-three oh four was approved. That change included the plan center, drop lot and storage depot updates. And of course, all those are near and dear to my heart. This application was premature, which is why it took over two years to finally submit a preliminary plan. The proposal has two thousand feet of boundary that butts against the West Shore manufactured home community. And even though we said there might be seventy-five foot separation, that noise, that light, that's going to carry far more than seventy-five feet. It's going to affect much of this and even including, uh, as far away as, uh, New Kingston and Southfield Crossing when the wind's blowing in that direction. This is a, a place where residences butt directly against an industrial facility. And something that we discussed back in, uh, January. And, uh, I'll propose that, uh, there's a way that perhaps we can mitigate some of this. I was pleased with the, uh, March Planning Commission meeting where Steve Hoffman, the county planner, wondered about so little vegetation. And I'm glad to see that the developer took that to heart. But I don't think two rows of Arbor Vida is sufficient. You've got fifty feet of land buffer between, um, the residential boundary and into the, uh, drop lot. We can probably put more than two rows of Arbor Vida in there. And we've discussed before a way of doing that in the Woodlands Buffer Yard. Uh, again, in the discussion we had in January, where if we went to two of the paragraphs that we discussed there, two C one, heavily landscaped and two C two, acceptable plants. That would help resolve the noise, light, site problems that we've been discussing. We still probably should put in a buffer, but I realize you can't force any of this because it is a permitted use. Nonetheless, you still can negotiate to have some of this to mitigate what's going to be a whole lot of problems for a large residential area to the north. And as I mentioned, if this had been submitted a day later, it would have been a five hundred foot buffer, not a fifty foot buffer that we're working with. I do agree that, uh, the supervisor, the commissioners, uh, discussed this. But for some reason, they didn't actually put it down in writing to, to pass on to you. And I hope that the supervisors don't make that same mistake. They also discussed the fencing. I'm glad to see that's coming into being. And they discussed hours of operation and I appreciate Supervisor Brown bringing that up. I think some of the other discussions that came up tonight about the reefer trucks, the ECP manning and reaching out to neighbors are all also important considerations. But don't make the mistake the commissioners did. Put it in writing and make it a requirement or at least negotiate that with the developer. Quite frankly, I'm with Ronald Reagan when he said, trust but verify. If you don't get it in writing, it probably won't happen. So I understand you can't impose this. You, you have to negotiate it. But please, let's cut those residents a break. Cause we've got an industrial site next to a residential area. And perhaps we can put this in some kind of neighborly way. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thanks Clarence. Right on time. Well done. Mike, based on some of those comments, have you, have you considered, did you play with the layout? Chris, or yes, sorry Scott, if we can go back, back to the, um, the plan.
Sure.
Mike, I don't know if you played, especially with that left side. It seems like. Mike, I don't know if you played, especially with that left side. It seems like there's enough room on the south to maybe, you know, create more of a straight line of parking down there instead of being so close to the, in the top left there. I don't know if you've been able to play with the site layout at all to try to create a little bit more buffer there.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, pretty much, I mean, we, we have, I guess, um, a lot of the stuff that you're not seeing on this particular planet is grading, just trying to make the whole site. We have stormwater management, um.
There's also poles or towers for the electric that you're contending with.
Yes, we, yeah, we have a.
And pipeline.
Four hundred foot, uh, power line easement dissects the property, and then there's also fifty foot Buckeye gas easement runs straight through the, you know, the other direction of the property. Um, yeah, I mean, we've, we've tried to, and as you could see in the, the other areas here, I mean, we, we did try to stay away from it, especially where, you know, a lot of these, uh, mobile homes were right up against the property line. We did stay away from those. The, you know, again, like, like I said, there, there is a dense, um, there is a dense tree line up there in like the northwest corner that exists now, so everything we're proposing's in addition to that. And, you know, the, the other part too, and it's, I know we have this all looking on one sheet here. I mean, this, this is forty-four acres. So when we're talking about three hundred eighty-five spaces, that's, that, again, it's spaced over, uh, you know, it's a, it's a substantial track. When you're out there, um, looking at it, 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 there, there is a lot of, you know, there is a lot of area here, and there's, there's, you could see there's a lot of area on this planet is not being developed for, you know, for parking.
Scott, if you, can you just zoom out slightly, the, the northeast corner, like north of the office building? Are there equal amount of residents there? It seems like there's less there potentially, uh, to the point where what if you just flip this entirely and office building is on the west side and the majority of that parking is on the east side, I'm assuming we're looking north there, that it would be further away from a lot of those, um, residences there?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I mean, again, it, there, there, there was a lot of, I mean, quite honestly, there's a, a lot of engineering in this, a lot of back and forth, and there was a lot of reasons why, you know, we wanted the, you know, wanted the office building out, you know, out near the road. Um, a lot of us to do with truck movements in and out, like I said, for.
Utilities as well.
Exactly. Do you have the utilities out there in the, in the road, um?
But I mean, the overhead, I mean, you, this is a tight lot with the underground pipeline.
Correct.
The overhead, that restriction where you can build a structure.
It really does. It's a really tight lot, and it's, it's really, you know, it's really tricky layout, and as far as being able to move that building back in that corner, you know, kind of the, the way that pipeline runs, if I can I can look at it. So the pipeline kinda runs this way, but then it comes up through here, so it, it kind of kills you in that whole area back there for being able to put, no, buildings, but utilities, things like that.
Is the pipeline staying where it's at? Is it being?
It's being, yes, it's staying where, right where it's at, yes.
You, you talked about two rows of trees, didn't you?
Yes.
Could you put three rows, uh, but just where the trailer park, the mobile home park is?
Yeah, I, I had a question on that. Would it be better to use like, like a Douglas fir or some tree that grows, you get heights for shielding and also goes wider? Arbivida are gonna grow slower.
Yeah.
And do staggered rows that you get a coverage to help muffle sound and visibility?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, and, and I can't remember who brought, was it Nancy saying, could you do more than two rows? Was that your question just now?
Well, and we know two or three rows can be too close together.
Yeah, let's not talk about that.
Yeah, but I'm.
The point well taken. I know what you mean.
It doesn't make any sense to, to slam them together. There has to be some.
Yeah, I think, I, I just had a little conversation. I think the developer would be willing to spruce up the section that was just mentioned where there's actual against it. We, we all know that where the pipeline, where the power lines go through, that doesn't matter. You know, but to spruce it up even more, and I think Carl you'd said, there's only, or Harry, there's only a few, uh, adjacent mobile homes. It's a pretty fancy one there, Mike, man.
But even if they're not adjacent, it muffles the sound for lots of people and, and.
But I think the key areas, you steal us from your kid or what?
Pretty much.
Yeah. Here's the key area here, then you have the pipeline, which are restrictions, what you can build underneath there. Then here's the other key area, this entire stretch, so. I think it will be appropriate to pack in that fifty feet more in those areas. Um, certainly could work with staff, you know, Scott and Aaron, cause quite frankly, these ones, I can't even operate this. These ones down here don't do a hill of beans. It's the railroad, you know, so I think more emphasis should be on the neighborhood per everyone's points earlier. I, I think, um, I, I think that there'd be a commitment to work with staff to, to pretty much pack in anything along the residences. Does that make sense?
If you have a fifty foot buffer there, you have plenty of room for three rows, leave room and keep them staggered.
Yeah.
It helps, one, with noise suppression, but two, visibility.
I, I think that's the way to go. I think we would commit to that and put that in writing, you know, uh, post approval, prior to any recordation or anything like that. It's just pack the heck out of it where it makes the most sense.
Thank you.
I know it's not a technical term, but we'll pack the heck out of it.
Cause the rest of their site is surrounded by commercial, pretty much.
Commercial, there's the railroad, it's, there's, there's no other areas where I think it's important is what we're talking about now.
Right, you're correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where people live.
And my, and another concern I do have is safety there because, you know, I realize New Kingston Fire Company is not that far away, but if something were to happen there, you have three hundred trailers and you have a mobile home park right there. I mean, I just think whatever we can do to make that a safe place to be.
Agreed. I, I, I think there is a commitment from the developer to work with staff, you know, continue to, prior to any, any finalization in terms of recordation or anything, but um, obviously, we know it meets the ordinances, but that's not the only criteria. We, I think it's appreciated what you guys are saying. We gotta be respectful in the northern end.
Aaron, any comments on the waivers?
No, um, if you have any questions, I can elaborate, but.
Okay. It's just these four at this point? Was, I, I think I saw mention of a fee in lieu of, is that?
Ultimately, I'll, I'll leave that to the applicant just to confirm.
That was for the sidewalks, Mike?
Yeah, right.
Yes, that's correct.
You're requesting, okay, so there's the fifth waiver then, I believe. I think we only show a four right now, Aaron.
Uh, if it's fee and lieu, we would not need a waiver in that case. That's already built out of the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else from the board? Anything else from staff? Okay, I'll look for a motion from the board.
With the additional landscaping buffer that you're talking about, I will make a motion to approve.
Why don't you say three rows in the fifty foot? That way it's.
Okay, I will make a motion that, um, provided that you do the three rows in the fifty foot, um, buffer area, that I will make a motion to approve.
I will second that as long as there are evergreen trees, um, so.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is that including the waivers, Laura? Or do you wanna take those?
Yes.
There's a motion on the table. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Opposed, if any. Harry's no, okay, that carries four to one. Thank you, guys. All right, we'll move on to new business. We have resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve. This is a temporary construction easement. Anything from Solicitor Schultz on this one?
Yeah, I'll, I'll cover this. It's, it's, uh, approval, don't you dare, Mr. Murphy. Um, we'll let it, he was trying to take my treats. Um, this is approval of a resolution that would authorize a declaration of taking for both a, a permanent right of way and a temporary construction easement, um, for the, uh, Joe Rookie Trail. Um, to provide the, the sidewalk connection down to, to the, to the Pike. Um, I know you've discussed this project before, so I don't, I won't go into a lot of detail on that. Uh, the township has been in negotiation with the property owner. Uh, it's where the, the Quick Fill is located. Um, there's, there's negotiation discussions, um, bogged down, and, and so we need to proceed with this, this project to, and, and this resolution's a necessary step in that. That's not to say that, uh, we won't continue to try to, to work out something amicably. Uh, in fact, I've already reached out to them, uh, since sta-, since the discussions through staff had, had bogged down, uh, to tell them, you know, for real, this is going to happen, it's going to be, I anticipate be approved this, this evening to move the project forward, and let's reengage in those discussions. So we'll move that forward. In parallel, we'll, we'll move forward with the, the procedure to, to take the, uh, the right of way and temporary construction easement by eminent domain if necessary.
We're only looking at putting like one of four foot sidewalk there.
It's hardly anything, yep.
All right.
In defense of them, if we can not do eminent domain and work with them, and I'll tell you the reason why. They lost like probably thirty-five, forty feet of their parking lot when the township put the turn lane in at Maple Drive. I have, if they never had given that up, I would have no issue. I have sympathy for them. I wanna make sure we work with them because their fuel tanks are there, that we do not impact their business, cause they've already given up a lot for the good of the cause with no issue. So, uh, I do have concerns with that, that we, we tried to do what we can.
Dave, I'll, I'll just comment real quick on that. You know, HRG teams were part of that conversation with the property owners, and we reassured them that this construction has no impact to their tanks, any underground facilities. Um, eh, there, there was two meter that needed to be adjusted by less than two inches that we were gonna take care of them for them. It just, um, we kinda, as Sean said, it got bogged down to a point where that, there's just no communication right now.
But I would see it their way if I gave up fifty feet already, even though it's nominal. Um, the other thing, are we gonna hug the sidewalk as close as we normally or reasonably can to the curb line? We're not keeping it interior?
Yeah, yeah, and in fact, that's, um, one of the requirements of the PENDUP process is that we do the minimal impact necessary. So yeah, we made sure to pay attention to that, Dave.
Yeah, I, I just have concerns with putting in there the declaration of taking. I'm, I've never been a big fan of that unless we really, really have to, and.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll say, you know, everything that I've seen, um, you know, staff has done an admirable job. I'm trying to, to work something out. The, the email that, that they received just said, our executive team is not interested in an agreement at this time. Um, and so we have nowhere to go with that and, and to keep the project on, on schedule this year.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Any other comments? I look for a motion.
Make a motion to, um, sorry, uh, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the proposed resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve to acquire temporary construction easement and permanent right of way for purposes of trail installation with in the property at sixty-four seventy-nine Carlisle Pike and authorizing no, negotiation and the filing of a declaration of taking.
There's a motion on the table from Nancy. Is there a second?
Second.
Laura, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any.
Opposed.
Okay, the motion carries three to two. We have traffic light detector discussion, Mr. Tyler.
Yep, that'll be me. All right, so, um, last July, we actually brought this to the board for review, and at the time, there was no action from the board. Um, so after conversations from last board meeting, um, from Supervisor, um, Harry, uh, to bring it back to the customer, sorry, uh, to bring it back to the, um, to the board for further discussion again. Um, so what we want direction on tonight is the Texaco and one fourteen traffic light. Um, so a brief summary, and I'll try to keep it very brief. So the standard camera out there right now has just a detection zone, right? It doesn't pick up actual car type, size of vehicle, it just has a zone. Um, so what we're proposing is to upgrade to the Myo Vision system, and it's a three sixty camera. It'll, uh, you know, get all four legs of that light. Um, but this, this is an advanced technology. It's the newest thing coming out. Um, we're actually looking at it for what we wanna do on the Carlisle Pike as well. Uh, but this system can depict whether it's an eighteen wheeler, a car, a truck, a box truck, and actually has that advanced, uh, advanced technology to determine to keep the cycle going to the max timing capability with the permit on that light. Um, and we're, from what we're being told and what we see, we actually saw Signal Service provided us a small demo on um, some traffic lights that they have in other areas with this on. Um, and the system is real time. We could tap in at any time. Signal Service could tap in if we call them, where right now, we have to physically go out there to tap into the light. Um, so if there is an issue with this system, Signal Service can respond faster, and it actually holds data up to a certain amount of time uh, before it, you know, deletes and it just keeps rotating through. So, um, that's what you have before you, um, tonight, eh, you know, it, it's around eighteen thousand dollars, right? Um, in the memo, I provided some other options with just doing one thermal, recommended to go three thermal cameras, but that's more expensive than this system. Um, so I, and I understand there's no motion on the agenda, so we're looking for direction to at least move forward with, uh, you know, an agreeance that staff can move forward with the Myo Vision, and then next month, we'll have the formal, um, approval for purchase on the agenda.
I wish this would have been on before the last item, two items, because John was here. I was gonna hit them up, cause HSS has to do intersection improvements there.
They have to do a left turn. And, and I talked to Scott about this the other day. If any type of improvement, and Aaron, if any type of improvements they have to do is on the timing aspect, they wanna be responsible for the actual detection system.
Well, I.
Well, Dave, I think Dave also, we gotta think what's down the pipeline. I know there's different things going down, and I think we talked about with the HRG that if there is an investment over there, it can be reused.
Yeah, it can, it can be reused at other intersections, yeah.
Uh, but we also gotta think about, you know, what, you know, everything that's going on right now, there might be some upgrades over there coming.
Tyler, um, thank you for looking into this. Um, I know it's been a problem. I'm still getting complaints about it, but thank you for looking into this, and I would like to do it today, if that would be possible. Well, now.
So would I.
The issue would be if there is future improvements, is this going to be something that we'll be able to carry through?
Yeah.
The upgrades?
Yeah.
The other part of that is, I know they're not required to, but sometimes we get out of them.
Correct, yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, to, to put it, like, this system can handle a major intersection, like eleven and one fourteen. And that's what we're looking at for eleven and one fourteen with the upgrades that are coming along the Carlisle Pike as well. Um, so it, this system is designed for high-capacity type intersections to be able to try to be as optimal as possible for traffic flow.
Yeah, we need to think about the safety aspect to the citizens and, and those people traveling through the township, and with Costco's going in, uh, we're gonna need something that's really good. Harry, if we were worried about safety, we wouldn't have put the arrow off for two years. Nobody wanted to back me on that, the arrow.
Oh, the left turner?
Oh, yeah, that's a bigger safety issue.
That is part of the HSS.
It's part of one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if we're worried about safety, it can't be when you want something. I brought up about that arrow situation two years ago, and that is a big time. People jump the light to try to get a left turn at peak time. They can't turn. We need to try to work on HSS.
I think they, I, I don't wanna misspeak, Aaron, so please, I, I believe they did agree to that.
They agreed to it last year, but.
At the time of their improvements is when they.
Yeah, but I think we need to push on it because I've seen too many close calls out there still. If, if we're gonna start using the word safety, it's for everything, and, and that is a big item there, is left turns there.
Dave, I agree with you.
Well, you didn't agree with me last year, went on to do something, so.
I think, all right, so we have, I think, two leaning in favor. Is Laura, do you have any questions or a position?
Uh, no, I, I would be in favor.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't wanna wait much longer either, so I.
All right, so we'll put it in motion. It, it, it will take like three, four weeks, uh, once we order it to get it in and get it installed, so that puts us right at the timeframe with the next board meeting for the actual purchase approval.
And how are we going with the preemptive, uh, uh, preemption there because?
That situation?
Coming around the curve.
My, my understanding was HSS was open to that conversation with us.
Well, we, we need not to forget about it. The other thing I.
It's about ten thousand, upgrade the preemptive.
I, I found out is they work peak when the emergency vehicle's only doing five miles over the speed limit.
Hmm.
I, I found that out. I found that out the other day. Some of those guys are doing a lot more than five miles, coming out of mechanic's berth.
Yeah, the plan there was to put a relay down right around your property.
Yeah, I understand. You know what I mean? Like, double check with them. If that's the case, that could be the other reason that's failing. Because till it's picking it up, it's banking on that being five mile over the speed limit, not twenty-five mile an hour.
Yeah.
So, double check with them if that's the case. I just found that out. I didn't know it. I thought it detected speed of the vehicle. It doesn't supposedly.
Yeah, yeah, I can look into that.
So, but that, that's something else we need to work on HSS about seeing if they'll do that because that is another safety issue there.
Understood. All right, so then, um, I'll proceed with, and put that all in motion then, okay?
Thanks, Tyler.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Move on. We have, uh, CFA Small Water and Sewer Grant. Uh, we have the memo and the proposal. Any comments or questions?
Is, is that for us to comment on?
Sure, if you want, yeah.
No, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I don't have much. It's, yeah, it's, uh, it's a grant application. Um, we reviewed it with HRG. They did a similar project elsewhere with this grant. Um, we're looking at, you know, trying to secure funds for the Woods Drive project and this is just another avenue if the board chooses and would like to direct staff to put in an application. The cost is there, um, to team up with the HRG to kind of get that scope together, get the preliminary budgets in place. Uh, the focus of it would be the storm sewer features of the road. Um, it is a very highly competitive grant program through the, um, CFA program. So the, the choice is your guys is if you guys want to direct us, um, to put in the application, we will.
Okay, thanks, Tyler. Anything from the board?
Do approve.
We have a motion from Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed if any. That motion carries. Mr. Moore, cost road project?
Yeah, I got a quick one for you. So, uh, we've been, we've been debating a few different options recently and the, the leading option was, are we able to phase this project over the course of a few years? So we can kind of have our cake and eat it too. Get both culverts replaced and eventually realign the road to be in a safer configuration for just a marginal increase over two culverts alone. We've looked at the hydraulics. We've modified the cul- culverts, played with a bunch of different features. And the good news is from an engineering perspective, we, we think we can make it happen. So, uh, we think we can get the phasing to work. The only road, potential roadblock would be DEP. So the permits that you get for this, uh, generally carry on the work over the course of twelve months. We'd essentially be asking for them to permit us to do this over thirty-six months. So we're, we have a meeting scheduled with DEP to try and coordinate this.
When will be, when will we be doing this job, Ray, financially? Would it be twenty twenty-six?
Well, you're gonna, you know, we're gonna probably incur some expenses in twenty-five as we do the engineering and design.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, construction like as far as putting the bridges in, we won't have the money for next year's budget, right?
I think we were looking at between eight hundred thousand to a million roughly, right?
Yep.
That would probably end up being a twenty-six expense, but I want to just be clear. There'll be some engineering expense that, I just wanted to be, I didn't want you to say, you told me it was in twenty-six and not in twenty-one.
The only reason I'm saying something, this winter, that would be a good job for the guys to go out there, maybe start breaking rock and keep it condensed within the approximate twelve month, good seat time for guys to go out there and use a machine with a breaker because that is a rock hill there and.
Yeah, it is.
In the county, I think you, everybody's aware, the county took a different approach, um, and, and instead of, uh, joining into the process, the county has just gone to each of those five municipalities. We were one of those. They have allotted us two hundred thousand dollars towards this project. So they're gonna pick up.
Just the culvert component.
Yeah, culvert component, but two hundred thousand's two hundred thousand. So it's great that the counties, uh, wouldn't, with no match.
Yeah, we, staff would rely to work with HRG to get that phase approach together to understand when we can kick things off.
Yeah, I would expect it'll be next year for, at the earliest, just due to DEP coordination.
So NPDS permits, uh, six to nine months minimum. That's why I'm.
Yeah.
We could do, that gives them two winters and then we could do the paving work the fall and spring. I would think they'd be able to knock that out in two winters. He, maybe even one. Depending on how quick they go, but.
You give us a dry winter.
Working in between, I mean, it, it's nice working in a heated cab for a couple guys to go up there and chisel away. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Aaron. All right, we'll close out with supervisor and staff comments. Scott? Kathy, go ahead.
Yes, I, I didn't get on a public comment in the beginning, but I'd like to thank HSS, um, Mark Simpson and HSS for apparently dropping off the check for a hundred K to help with the improvements at the intersection of Main and Locust Point Road. I'd also like to thank Cheryl and Tyler for coming to our meetings and listening to our concerns about what we wanted, what we didn't wanted that. And we appreciate their input that they gave to the board and then we also appreciate the board listening to that. I'd also like to thank Aaron and HRG for the pro bono work that they did at that intersection. And also like to thank them for seeing the surveying started there this week. I can't wait for the three to four weeks and then to the bids go out until the construction starts. Because we all know with all this development that's coming, it's going to bring more, more, more trucks into the small village of New Kingston and surrounding areas. So I just wanted to thank everybody for their, what they did in the input to trying to solve some of our problems in New Kingston. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thanks, Kathy.
Well, good evening.
You too. Scott, anything?
Just want to let the supervisors know, we've had a couple of open houses. Ray talked about Seven Brew. We have the tide cleaners coming up next week. And also tomorrow, um, some staff will be going to the HSS industrial pre-con meeting. For those that don't know what a pre-construction meeting, it, it pretty much sets the rules and regulations when ground is going to be broken. So that is occurring tomorrow. Um, so we will have, if not a schedule, at least, uh, a couple of weeks or a month out to when we see movement on the hemp property. Um, so we'll have some more information tomorrow on that.
Thanks, Scott. Well, let it. Glenn, thanks for joining on your birthday. I'm gonna call you out on that. Happy birthday. Amy, okay, Tyler. Chief?
On Monday, uh, March seventeenth, St. Patty's Day, uh, Cumberland Valley School District and their school police hosted a full-scale active assailant drill at Mountain View, uh, Middle School and Valley High. Um, we were part of it. It was very well done. A lot of lessons learned. It was police, fire, EMS. Uh, state police came in with the chopper, lifeline came in with air. So it was realistic enough and a lot of lessons learned and, uh, more to do from that, but it was a great first step. It was the biggest that they've done ever and that was, that was worthwhile. So Sergeant Shiflett from their police department that used to be with us really spearheaded it and did a great job. So just want to recognize them.
Chief, if I could prevail upon you to just do sixty seconds on this situation with the school buses and the cameras that are now on school buses that people don't seem to know about?
Yeah, um, a year and a half ago, I believe, almost two years ago, CV School District went to a private company. I think there's, and I may be off by one or so, five cameras on every bus. It records violations of their stop sign arms, alleged violations, and then the perpetrator gets a letter in the mail, kind of like the red light cameras and that you have been found, you know, you're being accused of violating the school bus law and it's a civil, is a civil violation. You can choose to ignore it and then it goes to, um, the criminal court at a much higher rate, obviously. Each one of those is examined, they're sent to Sergeant Shiflett at the time and he gets, it's over a hundred and fifty, if not two hundred every month. And he has to review each and every one. And if any of them are anywhere near close, he said, he basically, it says, here's, we think this is a violation, yes or no? And he determines, he's the final determining of, does that letter go out? Now, it can still go to a judge, et cetera. But he watches them all and if it's anywhere close, he says no to it because he understands what it carries. But they are, they are doing many, 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 many violations.
Because I talked to a school board member because Nancy said something to me and I was at a viewing. She was there. After they pay the fine, though, my, my understanding is it's turned over to either the county or the municipality it occurred in for the, the other, the legal part of it.
If, no, it's all through the school district, um, because the, because they're an authorized school police department. So if, if they say I ran the school light and I say, no, I didn't, and I want to go to court or I refuse to answer it and I end up down at Judge Silcox, it would be Sergeant Shiflett that has to be there, not one of our officers.
It still comes with a six-month suspension or whatever.
If they're found, if it goes to that level, it, basically it's one of those, their first step, step one is we say you did this, pay a civil, civil penalty of, I forget Nancy, what you said it was. It was.
Three hundred dollars, I thought it was.
Okay, um, or you have the right to appeal to the court system. Then they withdraw the civil offense. Sergeant Shiflett or the school police would issue then a traffic citation which carries a three to five hundred dollar penalty. And if you're found guilty, a six-month suspension of your license.
I thought they didn't have jurisdiction. Do they have jurisdiction in all townships?
They have jurisdiction of their school bus and the judge through the county and everything said for this system that they would allow that to occur. Which is better because we didn't want to be involved. We don't want to get stuck at the tail end of, they angered somebody and now we're showing up to court saying, I have no idea what we're even talking about. You know, it's their system and it has live stream video, so it's, everything is there. And I believe that's sent to them in a link that they can view it themselves, but, um, but yeah, it's, it's all through the school. It's the new wave of the future. A ton of school districts.
She told me they had over a thousand.
It, it's, they put out the numbers and stuff and it, it is crazy, so.
Thanks, Chief. Solicitor Schultz, Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, publicly acknowledge, uh, the new zoning hearing board member, Daryl McMillan. I think many of you know Daryl, longtime resident. Um, Daryl will be joining the, uh, the zoning hearing board in April.
X-ray, Aaron, Laura?
I'd just like to comment on something that Kathy said. Um, Tyler, Cheryl, Aaron, we have some really great staff and they spend a lot of time in extra meetings, staff meetings, um, uh, meetings for the committees and then evenings. I just wanted to acknowledge them. You guys do a great job. Thank you for all that you do for the residents and just for the township.
Thanks, Laura. Nancy?
Nothing. Thank you all for coming. This is a relatively short meeting for us.
Harry?
Same, same. Uh, thank you all for coming online or in person, uh, and staff. Thank you for all that you do.
Thanks, Harry. Dave?
Tyler, when's the wood coming up for? People are asking me.
I know, I know. I was going to talk to you afterwards. Um, Sean and I are working on finalizing the, the waiver and whatnot.
It'll still be on the website, right?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do it locally. Uh, but yeah, yeah, I was going to mention that to you, of course. Yep.
Couple people.
Yep, it, it's separated. We have it all marked out, one, two, three, four. We have four piles out there. We're just, we're going to button that up with Sean here in the coming week.
That's fine. Uh, the other thing, real quick for the board to think about, I had gotten a call on the traffic impact with a small business. They're going through the process of doing the traffic study, but I think if we look at revamping that or re-upping it, maybe we need to think about letting Aaron look to see if there is any mechanism because I think even within, the, the use that they list for what they have for trips generation, there's different uses within that block that can be low impact and high impact. So, uh, just something to think about because I think we need to be fair with all businesses, so.
Okay, anything else, Dave?
That's it.
Okay, I, I just want to comment on the right to know discussion earlier. Um, I just want to say I, I recognize the slippery slope. If I wasn't careful with how I articulated the context in my comment, and Randy, I'm looking at you only because I know you alluded to, I assume, one of the comments that I made, so I don't mean to single you out in that way, but, um, I recognize that slippery slope. I don't think I provided enough context. Maybe it was clear, maybe it wasn't, but I know it was a brief, short comment that I made, so, um, I won't do it now, but I'd be interested in at least maybe sharing a little bit more of the context to my concern. I think you'll at least s- see that point or at least, let me help, let me share my point of view and then we at least have both sides and then if we still disagree, I, I respect that. But, um, I appreciate what you were saying. I want to kind of digest what you said and I'd be open to having a little bit more conversation about that or I could send you a note or, or make a statement next meeting or something like that. So, yeah, sure, go ahead. I don't, don't want to prolong it. I just felt like I needed to at least respond to that, so.
No, no, no problem. I'd be open to a meeting. Uh, just to clarify, there are thirty items that are required to be restricted under right to know. Everything else is optional. And so of that number that was mentioned last time, that doesn't divide that number up amongst those thirty. And so that cost, uh, uh, that additional cost beyond those thirty is, is a decision of the board and those that you put in place to, to, uh, to do that. Everything else could be automatically, when it comes in the door, provided to the community. So, but reach out. I'd be glad to meet with you.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. All right. Anything, final call? Anything else from staff? All right. Any objection to adjournment? Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.